We'll call this meeting on the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Thank you.
First item on the agenda with action is public input. And I'll remind you, you have five minutes to speak. If you're looking at me, I will give you a one-minute warning. And first up is Fay McKelmont, reference thinking the chief. Fay?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, as you may know, the Arts and Cultural District is working with Main Street on a group that we're calling the Downtown Safety and Security Task Force. We're meeting on a monthly basis and occasionally a bi-monthly basis with the merchants downtown and the neighbors who live close to the downtown area to address some difficulties that they've been having down there with panhandling and vagrants and things like that. And I really wanted to just take a minute and commend the Chief of Police, Chief Reynolds. He's been at every one of the meetings or else he sends his representative. He's been extremely responsive. He's given out his number at every single meeting and asked people who have a problem to give him a call. He has helped us put together some really educational programs, and we've had a number of guest speakers, and we're going to have more in the future. And he also takes time to meet with the co-chairman and myself every month before the meetings. And I just thought you all should know what a great job we feel like he's doing and that he's being very responsive to all of the requests from the merchants and from this group. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is council comments. And I'm gonna go a little out of order tonight. It's that time of the year where we typically announce our candidacies for the upcoming municipal election. And I will cut to the chase that I will not be seeking reelection this term. I thoroughly appreciate the support, and it's been quite an honor. And I'll save the a little more lengthy of the talk until I leave, but I do plan on not filing for reelection. Thank you. And Councilor Maronis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that same note, you know, I've been I'd be coming up for reelection in District Four. And I've been thinking long and hard on what I want to do. The more I consider the possibilities and the idea that our current wonderful Mayor, Mayor Marshall may someday decide not to run, I have decided to throw my hat into the mayor race. So I will be seeking to run for mayor. And I would greatly work towards and try to continue the openness and inclusive and nonpartisan environment that the mayor has established and done it in a way that we still have great fiscal responsibility and clean audits and a tremendous amount of transparency that is not real characteristic across the state and the model for many municipalities of the state. So I hope that I can continue the inertia he's started there. And I've, in many cases, told people that I would only be running running two terms as a counselor. But in spite of that, there's still work that I would like to see done. I still have some economic projects that I want to see through and continue my inroads with some city-county projects and provide some work. And I think that I could fulfill that and try to work towards those ends in that position. And I appreciate anybody's support and encouragement. And look forward to a good campaign against anybody who also wants to participate in government. It's very important, and I do encourage anybody else to try to run. I encourage people to run for the District Four Council position. District Four now does need a new voice, some fresh ideas, and I look forward to those candidates and hope for some good elections. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to both of you, and I know that we're gonna miss you a lot, your jokes. And let's support each one of us. Now, on the other side of things, I want to talk a little bit about the movie that was made on Boston Hill. I went up there, and I went into the caves, and it was very, very interesting. They had a movie set in there. They had their actors in there. Now, contrary to what people have said, that they have destroyed a little bit of the vegetation. Maybe so, and maybe not. But it's a good thing that they made this movie because it opens up possibilities for Silver City. I think the mining the mining caves up there is gonna be a mega thing. Hopefully, that the people will realize that it needs to be done, whether they spent a dollar here or whether they spent a thousand dollars here, it was something that was right into Silver City. Now, getting back to the trails up there, the reason that they had vehicles up there was because they had EMTs up there. They had to have protection. And I'm glad that they did that. So please, bear with us. I know that the city made a resolution saying that no motorized vehicles. But who was to know that we were gonna do that we're gonna ask for permission to do a movie up there? Sometimes we have to think outside the box, and it was beneficial to Silver. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Cook?
I hiked to Boston Hill, and I didn't find the spot, but I get lost easy. So I'm glad you went up, Councilor Ray, because I did go up looking for the damage. I have a picture of the damage that was done, and I have a picture. I didn't think it was that bad, but I didn't see. Like I said, I got lost up there, so I missed the spot. But I did go. Thank you. And congratulations to Mike and to the mayor. Enjoy retirement.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to congratulate the mayor for retirement, and I'll make further statements when it's your last meeting. I've enjoyed working with you. And I want to congratulate Mike on your announcement, Councilor Maronis, on his announcement. And I just wanted to let everyone know that I appreciate their support and their request that I run for mayor in the event that Mayor Marshall decides not to run. And it was a very difficult decision for me to make personally, but I can tell you that after thinking it through, I realized that the position I currently hold is actually the best fit for me on the council. I'd rather be someone who's a legislator that actually votes, because how many times have you voted the entire time I've been on the council? Three times?
Not counting the times to go take a bathroom break.
Okay. Well...
About thirty-three.
Okay, we're not gonna count the bathroom break ones. I'm not sure I'll miss his jokes. Sometimes I'm the, you know, recipient of them. But I just, you know, in looking at how I fit best in my service to the community and also in service to the broader state of New Mexico and municipal officials as a member of the elected member of the New Mexico Municipal League Board, I think it's really best for me to stay where I am. I really do enjoy it, being a counselor and being able to speak my piece and do my voting. So thank you, and congratulations, Councilor Maronis. And Mayor, how many more months left? Just four?
Yeah, it's about four or five.
Yeah? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular meeting October 22, 2013.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor?
I'm going to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting of October 22, 2013.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council of October 22, 2013. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve, and no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can you just hear me on my mic?
No.
Is that any better? A little better?
There.
A little better?
Yeah.
Now we're getting there? All right. I tend to mumble, so I need help. The next item on the agenda is under reports and visitor center first quarter 2013 report and tourism interpretation by Sissy McAndrew, Executive Director of the Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber of Commerce. There you are. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilor, staff, and community. Just wanted to give you a general overview. I did come with George Julian Dorn at your last meeting, and we spoke about tourism. But I wanted to give you a little bit more information about the visitor center and actually the added value that you're getting by having the Green Chamber and I guess probably myself there because I love this community so much. If we could get the lights out a moment. This is a chart that you've been seeing for the last two and a half years, and this is basically the visitation by month. You'll see in July that we've just got two bar graphs there, and that is because, of course, we took over in August back in 2011. But what you're able to see is actually the visitation is growing, as we spoke at the last meeting. In spite of the fires, in spite of the shutdown, we have continued to have visitation. So we are seeing things turn around, and this is just basically displaying that. This is a very informative pie chart. This is showing us where the visitors are coming from. And one thing we're real proud of is you'll actually see Silver City and Grant County. We're getting a lot of locals coming in for the first time. And it's not that they're just coming in to see the visitor center. Our number-one way that people find out about Silver City is from friends and family. So they're coming and picking up information and mailing it out and talking to friends and talking to family. You'll see also on New Mexico, 13.2 percent. That's the rest of the state. And then really regionally, which we've heard from the State Tourism Office and where we've been doing a lot of the marketing, Arizona, Texas, California, Colorado, 34 percent of our visitors are coming from there. Other parts of the U.S., 27 percent. Now, if you'll notice, this is just a line through September. So when we get to October and this next quarter, we're gonna see a shift here. And we'll probably break it out a little bit more for you because we're seeing the snowbirds migrate down. I looked, we had only had two people from Alaska during this time period. We're starting to get a lot of people from Alaska coming in because they want to be down in our climate, and they want to stay in the United States. So we'll see the shifting and be able to look at this together through the year. Canada, 5 percent, 5.1 percent, and other international, 6.7 percent. This is an area that's growing. We're getting more and more international visitors. Some of them are doing tours of the United States, the national parks. We're getting a lot of foreigners that are coming in from going along the continental divide, whether it's biking or hiking. And they're really fun because when they're coming in, they're kind of taking a day off, and the stories and the adventures that they have that they share with our volunteers is something that we talk about quite often. The other thing that we're seeing with locals is they are coming in and using the computer. We have people that when they use a computer will then make a donation to the visitor center. They know they can only use the computer for a little while. If a guest comes in and wants to use it, they'll immediately get up and leave. And then we have a lot of people that come in and use Wi-Fi. So this is where some of the lodgers' tax money went two years ago, and it's something that's really is paid off. You'll see the printer on the right-hand side. So if there's information that we don't have, maybe they want a map of someplace. We can pull that up on the computer, print it off for the individual, and they can be on their way. The other area that we had spoken to the council about a year ago is that we really wanted to promote the the meeting room in the back. It's a space for nonprofits and community groups to come and have their meetings. And these tables were recycled from the library, and you'll see how nice the chairs are. This is where the Arts and Cultural District has its monthly meeting, but it's a really great space. That design on the wall is actually clay. This was one of the clay projects that was done during the Clay Festival. And it's actually also a area where we can have additional office space if we need to do special work. The calendar's in the back, and people simply call in and schedule the room. This is what we're calling Come Have a Sitsi. This is one of the chairs that they may be putting in the Silco Theater. There will be a total of three chairs, and the public will be invited to come in, to sit in the chairs, to see which one they want to vote for. And this one just actually arrived today. But it's another way where the public is coming in. Of course, the Fourth of July, we had a lot of folks. The Clay Festival, we have a lot of tours that will start right at the visitor center. But it's an area where people are really coming down now and feeling that it is part of their part of their home. This is another area that we've really benefited. This is from Money Magazine in October, and we pulled out the statement on the side. They were actually going around and doing a article on wineries. And they got to the visitor center in Silver City and found out what a great place we were, and suddenly we ended up being written about and also the Western New Mexico University Museum. And this is because of Kelvam Garland, our outreach assistant, happened to be up at the front desk when they came in. And so we kind of expanded from the norm as far as just giving general visitor information and really kind of went beyond the call of duty, and these people picked up on it, and we got some additional coverage on that. And this is really a part that I absolutely love, doing tours. This summer, we started doing tours for the Western New Mexico University orientations, and that was basically getting on the bus with the students who really knew they were gonna be here and just saying, kids, we're a community, we're glad to have you here. We're just down the street and be in touch and come visit the visitor center. And they go on their merry way, but then to spend about a half hour, 45 minutes with their parents and to help those parents understand where their students were going to be and the fact that we were an up-and-coming and a live community and that we were welcoming their child to our community. And it really has been paying off. We've also had some bus tours in town that we're starting to work with and being sure that not only can they use our restroom facilities, but we're able to help guide them to the restaurants and start doing some planning so they spend more time and more money here in Silver City. We're the Tourism Association of New Mexico member for the chamber and for other visitor centers. We work very closely with the visitor centers across the state. We're starting to work with a lot of conferences and events. We've got an archaeology conference coming in this coming spring, and they're gonna be staying at the Murray Hotel. We're working on trying to set up catering and a few other things that they're finding challenges with. Of course, the museums, we're guiding folks to our museums. Their numbers are up. The tourism businesses downtown are back to seeing visitation and customers to pre-2009 numbers, so they're starting to feel very good about things. And as a Realtor, which I do part-time, I want to let you know that there's a lot of interest in downtown. We have several buildings for sale right now. There are a lot of showings going on. We really feel that the centerpiece is gonna be the Silco Theater. When the marquee went up, there was a new energy downtown, and folks are just waiting to kind of see that finish. The fact that you've gone ahead and had the mixed-use zoning is making a big difference. People are looking at the downtown areas as a place to live and work. We also have basically been building community by going to different organizations, our local organizations, and telling them what we're doing at the visitor center and what a wonderful place we are living in. So we've given presentations to Kiwanis, the newcomers club. I was on CAPS, Mona Brits Community Program. And this coming January, we'll be meeting with the retired persons, the widows, and the Rotary Club. We have 13 volunteers right now. We're fully staffed, and we've got seven part-time people. We want the community to realize we always are welcoming them to come in, to help us, to spread the word about what a great place Silver City is, and to basically come down and enjoy themselves. We will be having a volunteer party on the 24th in the back room, and we have restaurants that are contributing food. And once again, what we do there is we thank the volunteers for their service, gather their stories, provide them with additional information. George Julian Dorn will be coming and talking about the Arts and Cultural District, but things are going very, very well down there. It's a hub of activity. And just invite you and everyone to come down. If you haven't, come on down and see the visitor center and take home some of the new information that we've got available. Are there any questions at all?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is staff reports. Mr. Brown?
Hello, I'm...
Mr. Russell?
Hello.
Anita? How did I know that answer? We'll move on to item number 10, unfinished business. Approval disapproval of ordinance number 1225, adopting a municipal infrastructure grocery seat tax in the amount of one-eighth of one percent, which is .125 percent, for public safety purposes. Note, if approved, a question to the voters will be placed on the ballot for the upcoming regular election to be held on March 4, 2014. Mr. Brown, would you like to give us some background?
This ordinance is the second step in continuing the public safety tax that was imposed almost 10 years ago. We've I've got some presentations of exactly what the funds have been used for over the last almost 10 years and how well and they'll continue to be used in that same fashion. Also on the website, we've also put a calendar of how the process works. The next step would be to put it on the question on the election resolution and then move forward. But this basically is not a tax increase. All it does is continue a tax that was imposed in 2004, five, or four, one of those years, 10 years, 10 years ago. And so we're gonna so we can continue using it for the police and fire. It pays for, right now, three police officer salary and one firefighter salary and equipment for both departments. If approved by the electorate, it will have to be used for those same purposes. It's on the the ordinance for public safety. It'll be on the ballot for public safety. This basically basically amounts to 12 and a half cents per hundred dollars spent. So if you vote against it, you're trying to save 13 cents for every hundred. But you're losing three police officers and one firefighter as well. So also, the fact that this is an increment of grocery seats taxes that is voted on by the the public means that the town council at no time would be able to change the purposes for which these funds are used. The only way that it could be changed is if it went back out to a vote and the voters changed it. Unlike six increments that the town council currently has, for instance, one of the municipal grocery seats taxes that we had dedicated to the water sewer fund, and the town council moved it a couple of years ago from the dedicated purpose of water sewer, and now it's been moved to pay for the debt service for those bonds for the quality-of-life projects that we worked on.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience like to speak on ordinance number 1225? Seeing none, Council comments? Council Maronis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Probably enough, just on Mr. Brown's last comment to voting against three police officers and a firefighter. So far in my four years doing this position, the only people I've heard say that we have too many police officers are not from our town. Generally speaking, most of the town residents I've ever spoken to appreciate the presence and the ability to to serve in a timely manner. So at this point, I think it would undermine a lot of what we do if we end up losing those officers. And I I'm in favor of this this ordinance, and I hope the voters are as well.
Thank you. Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also in support of this ordinance. It actually meshes quite nicely with something that we're gonna be visiting later on a resolution regarding the Sustainability Plan for 2030, where it does talk about the need to ensure that we have sufficient police and fire, folks that to be able to handle changes that potentially will happen in the climate that are at least currently projected to occur by 2030. So this begins to supplement that, begins to move towards that. This doesn't just also go for the officers, but also goes for, I think, didn't it not purchase a ladder truck?
The ladder truck for these vehicles?
Correct.
For it could be used for any equipment associated with...
Public safety. And I just want to make sure, as I said, the last time we when we actually did the NOI for this is that when we looked at how the funds were spent, none of the funds were spent on maintenance of those vehicles, was solely on the purchase of those vehicles and on the actual salaries for the three police officers and the one fireman.
The way we've been using it is for the salaries and benefits for the officers as well as the capital purchases for the two departments. The maintenance has all been handled by the general fund.
And Mr. Brown, if I'm correct, the current tally of funds that this tax over the 10-year has, it's what, almost it's 3 million plus, just not very much?
Yes, it's over 3 million.
Over 3 million. So it's been effectively used, and it supplements the monies that are used out of the general fund for the fire and police department. So I hope that the voters are also in support of this if this is voted through by the council. So, thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments?
I just comment a little bit that I think it's really important to look at the big picture on this tax, and we're facing a time right now where the state is has basically attacked our local autonomy to control our revenues. And in doing that, they did empower us to impose additional tax. So if you want to believe some politicians who say there will be no tax increase on her watch, maybe not by the state, they forced it down to the local level. And that is a very important distinction that we have to we have to compensate at some point. The tax that is in place right now that this would continue had a sunset clause, and there was a specific reason for that sunset clause, and that was basically for transparency and accountability. The over the 10 years... The, over the ten years, I think we've proven that we utilize the funding for the public health, safety, and welfare of this community, and that is the primary objective and responsibility of this body to do that. To continue to put this tax at risk is, has a huge potential to harm the health, safety, and welfare of this town. And we all know, as the plan we're going to discuss later, the predictions that are out there, we're looking at hotter, windier, drier. When you look at hotter, windier, drier, you need more police, you need more firefighters. We all know that our roads are not in the condition that we would like them to be in. Well, if this tax goes away, you can expect those roads to not get repaired anytime soon because that funding is going to have to go to pay for direct life, safety, and health issues that, that this tax would have funded. So it's, it's really critical as we, as we balance the, the new funding sources and try to figure out how we balance our budget going forward over the, the next several years, that, that we not jeopardize certain things. And we obviously don't want to add any burden or continue any unnecessary burdens. This is not an unnecessary burden, this is a critical burden that we have to maintain. And I just beg of and pray that the, the public will come out and strongly support this and support our community in doing so. Are there any other questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Council Morones?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number twelve twenty-five, adopting a municipal infrastructure grocery seed tax in the amount of one-eighth of one percent, point one-two-five percent, for public safety purposes. With the note, if approved, a question to the voters would be placed on the ballot for the upcoming regular election to be held on March fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I approve. A second motion is stated.
There's a motion, a second, to approve ordinance number twelve twenty-five. Is there any other discussion?
I have a question.
Counselor.
At what point do we, after the potential approval, or if it's approved, then we discuss what the question would be? Isn't that what we have to do tonight as well?
That comes at the center tent meeting when you do the election resolution for the entire.
That's correct. Okay. So we don't have to do it tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, let's think about, it's going to be a short, sweet question, basically, like, continue the specific increment for the purposes of public, public safety.
I just think it's going to be important that the public understand that it's committed to public safety and that it's not a slush fund for the council to play with.
Right. Not that one time, saying public safety is necessary.
Completely.
Let's be very, very careful in how we write the, the question.
If you would give us direction on that question.
We will work together to have proposed language that the council can then approve or amend.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? There's a motion, any second, to approve ordinance number twelve twenty-five, adopting a municipal infrastructure grocery seed tax in the amount of one-eighth of one percent, which is point one-two-five percent, for public safety purposes. Note, if approved, a question to the voters would be placed on the ballot for the upcoming regular election to be held on March fourth, two thousand and fourteen. Roll call, please.
Council Morones?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Hook?
Aye.
Council Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of a special dispenser permit application for the Members' Regional Arts Council's Black Tie Ball on December fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, from six P.M. to twelve A.M. at Laoli Toyota, twenty-seven fifty, Highway one eighty east, Silver City, New Mexico. License holder information is snappy mark number four. Owner name is WNN Enterprises Incorporated of two oh six North Hudson, Silver City, New Mexico, eight eight zero six one. Fay McCollum.
Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you the letter and documentation requesting the special dispensers permit for the Black Tie Benefit Ball. We've included in there all of the legal paperwork that we need to submit to the state, as well as a description of the event, and an invitation to the event. And so do you have any questions for me regarding any of that paperwork? No?
Any?
Let me ask one question real quick. So there's two serving areas, is that right, Fay?
For the alcohol, there will be one serving area.
Oh, okay, one serving area.
Well, there's going to be, the food will be in one location and the alcohol will be in another.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move to approve our special dispenser permit application for the Members' Regional Arts Council Black Tie Ball on December fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, from six P.M. to twelve A.M. at Laoli Toyota, twenty-seven fifty, Highway one eighty east, Silver City, New Mexico. License holder information, snappy mark number four. Owner's name, WNN Enterprise, Inc., two oh six North Hudson, Silver City, New Mexico, eight eight oh six one.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion, a second, to approve. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion, a second, and no discussion to approve a special dispenser permit application for the Members' Regional Arts Council's Black Tie Ball on December fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, from six P.M. to twelve A.M. at Laoli Toyota, at twenty-seven fifty, Highway one eighty east, Silver City, New Mexico. License holder information is snappy mark number four. Owner's name, WNN Enterprises Incorporated at two zero six North Hudson, Silver City, New Mexico, eight eight zero six one. All those in favor, signal five, you're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your ball. The next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of resolution number two thousand and thirteen thirty-six, adoption of town of Silver City Sustainability Plan 2030 Policy Statements, Selected Efforts, and the overall plan in print. Denise.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Turn it over to you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Denise Smith. I'm with the Town of Silver City's Office of Sustainability, and I'm proud this evening to present the Silver City Sustainability Plan 2030 and to request adoption of resolution two thousand and thirteen dash thirty-six. This plan is a result of a seven-month effort by a task force, and it provides a set of recommendations for actions to reduce the town's vulnerability to impacts from increasing heat, drought, larger and more intense wildfires, and increased stress on emergency services, personnel, and equipment. At this point, I want to acknowledge Nick Sicillo, the former director of the Office of Sustainability, as the main force behind this plan. Nick, would you please stand, be acknowledged? And Nick will also be on hand to assist me with any questions that you might have. Now, why did we go through this exercise? As Councilor Madison mentioned, the analysis of climate data specific to Silver City and the surrounding area shows that temperatures are projected to increase and precipitation patterns are likely to change. Dave Dubois, the state climatologist, has said that temperatures are projected to rise approximately two degrees between 2013 and 2050. And although the overall precipitation rate is not likely to change, the pattern of rainfall will likely change. With less frequent but heavier rain events, a delay in monsoon season, also snowpack may decrease and runoff may occur earlier. So the results from these climate, impacts, climate changes, if we have stronger storms, we're going to have erosion and damage to structure. With reduced winter precipitation and earlier snowmelt, we'll have drier conditions. Pests like bark beetle infestations during drought times may cause tree die-offs, which could lead to larger wildfires. And so these impacts aren't isolated from each other. Each affect the other, and they can end up magnifying the results. For example, I already mentioned that, what if the winter wasn't cold enough to kill off the bark beetles, which is something that we've been talking about? And they killed off a lot of trees, and then the monsoon season is delayed, and it's hot and dry, and a lightning storm sets off a wildfire. Does that sound familiar? So the process we used was to get a twenty-person task force together, and it, the plan was, or this task force was made up of public employees and concerned citizens. And right now, I want to acknowledge those of the task force that came here tonight and the other supporters. Would you please stand and just let folks know that you worked on the Sustainability Plan? Thank you. Appreciate your body help. The task force met five times between October 2012 and April 2013, and they identified elements that the town's municipal operations and within the community that could be vulnerable. And they grouped these elements into categories, systems, and key planning areas. And once we did that, we broke up into subgroups to perform the vulnerability and risk assessments for each area. And this table shows all of those, the category, systems, and key planning areas. So two categories, community and environment. The systems we looked at were emergency services, food, public health, transportation, waste, energy, land and urban forest health, stormwater, and water. And then the key planning areas there are on the right-hand side. Now, I've provided you with a copy of a longer presentation that describes more of the process, but I thought that I conclude my formal presentation right now and then answer any questions that you might have. And then after that, Nick's going to provide some information on some initiatives that he's working on that are related to this plan. So are there any questions?
Any questions? No questions?
No questions.
I, I appreciate the opportunity to have met with you and Nick prior to the final printing, and I think you've incorporated our discussions very well.
Nick, would you like to?
Council members, mayor, town manager, town attorney. Thank you. Let me start again. It's the mayor, council members, town manager, Mr. Scavern. Denise did a good job of summarizing what we had gone through over a fairly extensive period of time, starting with and before, but actually on the date, spring of last year, where we recommended and received a concurrence on addendum number two to the Climate Action Plan. And that was called the Climate Change Adaptation Plan. And the plan that Denise has just described, that's been completed and to be requested for your adoption, is a result of months and months of labor to make that happen. One of the things that I'd like to do is to leave with the secretary, the triple theme of protect, conserve, and prepare, which was another way that we categorized the projects that we have and that are contained in Exhibit B to the resolution. That seemed to become pretty meaningful over time. There's a lot of ways to categorize this. We use the baseline of Flagstaff in terms of the study format. But the more we got into it, the more we talked about wildfire, the more we talked about public safety, the more we talked with Chief Reynolds and Chief Ben Como, and in related ways in other projects, protect became a major theme. Our office, with support and funding by the town, following the two federal grants, has had a major focus on conservation. Both water, the water conservation plan that you're familiar with, that you adopted, with the solar energy and conservation of both energy and, and cost, which you're more familiar with, especially with the large-scale solar deployment of wastewater, with recycling, where we're looking to go from basically six or seven percent about five years ago. I think we're at, we had, yeah, twenty-two percent currently, which is over a triple increase, much to the acknowledgement of Terry Timmy's efforts, and the town manager's support of that. And we have a strategic goal, which I think you've approved for 2017, of thirty-three percent. And Mr. Timmy feels that it's very practical, and we've put it in the plan, to establish a recycling rate of fifty percent by 2030. Those are some pretty significant achievements, both current and projected. The Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which the town manager approved, was something proposed to address the, the kind of delayed effort that we had seen with the Grand County Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and with the growing threat and concern by the fire department and citizens. And over many conversations, we proposed and discussed with the town manager and the mayor, doing a Community Wildfire Protection Plan for the town and the ETJ. And Commission Chair Caston has concurred on that. That effort is underway. We will be doing our first neighborhood hazard assessment, actually in Boston Hill, next week, unless movie or other events inhibit that. And we actually have twelve high-risk areas that have been identified so far, mostly by the fire department. So we'll keep you apprised of that, but I wanted to let you know that that effort has started. We haven't waited after getting concurrence from the town manager and the mayor. So like in the water conservation plan, that Councilmember Madison, as you had acknowledged when Denise presented that, as we had started action on Ben Altamirano, with some significant projected savings, we're also moving out on the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. We are working to look at matching staffing to threat and encouraging, you know, further conversation in terms of fire department and police department staffing, and looking at different ways, and as several people have said tonight, thinking outside the box, which may involve non-paid positions. And there are pros and cons to that, that we've started that conversation as well. We're doing a number of things in, in, under the preparedness theme, and I'll mention one briefly. We felt, we felt for several years now that maybe one to two hundred people out of ten thousand in the town have the level of awareness that would be necessary for a family and a neighborhood and a community to prepare in a serious manner. And the concurrence by the task force was, that's not sufficient. We need to take this conversation to a broader base. And in that regard, the Neighborhood Alliance has just received Community Enhancement Fund funding of over eight thousand dollars to put on the March 2014 Symposium on Preparedness, a lot of which will focus on wildfire evacuation, but broader aspects as well. And we've confirmed Don Scott, who's the Bureau And we've confirmed Don Scott, who's the bureau chief for the State's Department of Homeland Security, he will be the keynote speaker. Kathy Anderson has done quite a bit of work on this, and we hope to attract quite a few folks. But outreach, education, and support to the public has been acknowledged as really the number-one priority at this point. So, I'll leave these three pages for Ann. Denise and I had discussed this earlier. It was kind of a baseline of the presentation I made to the Gila River Festival at Allison's request, and so I'd like you to have that. I'm going to speak briefly to lessons learned. And as Peter Russell had encouraged me, what are the things you would recommend to the council that we not lose sight of? Lessons learned, and I had discussed this again, both with the town manager and the mayor. Two things, plans and funding. It's important to keep what's important alive. And during our process, we found two, what we considered significant plans to be out of date with no action taken. And we wanted to bring that to your attention. And again, we've discussed this with the town manager and the mayor. Those two plans as an example, there may be others, is the 2002 Flood Plane Management Plan that was written for a grant that did not get funded and the plan went into lapse for whatever set of reasons. The other is the, more dear to my heart, the 2008 Grant County Hazard Mitigation Plan, which overlaps with some of the climate extreme concerns that we have. It addresses wildfire, tornadoes, storms, lightning, heavy rain, hail, et cetera, et cetera. That was done by the county with participation from the town. It was adopted by the town council September of 2008, five years and two months ago. Virtually nothing's been done with that. So, one of the recommendations that you'll see in the proposed actions in Exhibit Two in the resolution is to bring that plan forward, take another look at it, come back and make recommendations for proceeding with X out of Y of those recommendations. So, keeping critical plans current is important, not only to keep priorities fresh, because without a date plans, it's kind of hard to do that, if the technical and leadership input has not been put into plans and they kind of, and there's a common perception of the public, which is not healthy, that the town plans tend to sit on shelves. Bringing those forward would help restore that. And discussion with the town manager, he will, at some point in the future, recommend to you a set of critical plans out of whatever the number is, I don't know, 80, 84 and a half of plans that the town may have. Whatever critical subset he thinks is important to keep up to date on some kind of regular basis and to make a recommendation to you for your input on how often you would like to be briefed on the progress against the efforts for those critical plans. That's particularly important in applying for grant applications, because the 17 efforts that are in Exhibit Two, while many of them require little or no funding from the town, a number of the efforts are private, like putting on the Symposium for Preparedness. So, a lot of the actions in Exhibit Two are, that may require staff support by the town, but little or no funding. However, if we want to do a couple of the plans, specifically if we want to do a new, this would be a policy decision, a new flood plane management plan, that might cost about $75,000. And that might, we might be able to get a grant for that from the feds or the state, probably the feds, and we might have to put up some match money. Certainly, the implementation funds to actually do what that plan would call for with the town's approval, or with whatever actions that are accepted by the town and the council for implementation for the Grant County Hazard Mitigation Plan would require funding. So, in that regard, you know, brushing up and enhancing our grant-writing capability at a minimum training would be very useful to do, because as there have been several conversations, there's not enough money in the world to do everything that we'd like to do. So, our ability in terms of private and public partnership to write grants, to bolster with whatever money the town may have, is critical. And as part of that, having current plans to attach to a grant application is very important, because as you know, many grants say, if you don't have Plan Type A, you're not eligible to apply. In that regard, the specific plan tonight that we will ask you to adopt, one of the things that I was elated with, as you may know, November 1st, only a few days ago, President Obama signed out an executive order directing federal agencies to support state and local efforts to prepare for climate change, with a focus on improving community resiliency. The plan that Denise is presenting to you tonight is all about community resiliency. So, with that plan fresh, within the next 12 to 18 months, when grants become available, there'll be only a few communities that will be able to put up a 60-page, basically a resiliency plan with specific actions to apply for funds. So, just an example of having current funds available for grant writing. Key to the funding is match funding. I'll just kind of let that be. It might be useful in conversation with senior management to discuss whether or not in the future, a match fund, fund would be useful to have, so that when a major grant opportunity comes up, especially those that might be anticipated against council-approved plans, that there is match money that's readily available. Three things not to lose sight of. The hotter and drier, which you mentioned earlier, mayor. It's nice to see New Mexico as number one for some things, but it's very disconcerting to have the University of Arizona say that this year, 2013, New Mexico is the epicenter for drought in the United States. Two, the theme of protect, conserve, prepare. It's a really useful, practical theme that keeps efforts tied together. There's not too many people that would disagree with those and the public safety and cost savings and preparing for the future that they embody. And the last thing is that it's simply the president's executive order. We've mentioned that. That potentially is a huge opportunity for the town, and we would be well positioned. Thank you.
Anybody in the audience like to speak to Resolution 2013-36? Seeing none, council?
I actually want to talk on two fronts, one being the Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber of Commerce highly supports this. I was one of the attendees at the conference over in Tucson a couple of years ago. And just getting this sort of policy in place is really going to help us a lot in the future. The second area is really looking at it from a real estate and a marketing standpoint, because we're seeing a lot of people, whether they're coming into the visitor's center, they're coming into town and considering moving here. And when they see that our city council is looking to the future and planning for the future, they're coming back and saying, this is a community I really want to consider moving to. So, we would highly support you. I encourage you to go ahead and pass this ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Sissy. We also had, received a letter from the Silver City Neighborhood Alliance in support of this plan that will be a part of the record. Any other comments from the council? I just want to comment a little bit on, you know, I think it's interesting in the dynamics, it took seven months to write the plan. And there, I could tell you, one part is already a little outdated, is since the plan was beginning to be written seven months ago, and in my, my other part of my life that includes a paycheck, I run the ambulance service and I pay the bills on the maintenance for those. So, this plan recommends that the town immediately acquire one ambulance in the near future. I can tell you, the town needs two rescues in the very near future, and the hospital needs two ambulances in the very near future. So, I think it's important that the plans be living documents and that, as was also referenced, that they not sit on a shelf. I was part of the committee that wrote several of the plans that Mr. Sicillo mentioned are collecting dust on a shelf. So, that's a nice honorarium for my work. The other, I just, I just want to recommend that on the now therefore be a result, that we strike Section B, as it is redundant to the overall policy book, that we would be adopting a policy that says we're adopting a policy for the policy. So, we can, if it pleases the council, we would strike Section B out of the now therefore, move Section C to Section B. And if that is your pleasure, please let your motion reflect it. Counselor Bedison.
Mr. Mayor? I move to approve Resolution Number 2013-36, adoption or adopt Resolution Number 2013-36, the adoption of the Town of Silver City Sustainability Plan 2030, policy statements, selected efforts, and the overall plan in principle, striking Section B policy and changing Section C to Section B.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion, a second, to approve Resolution 2013-36. Is there any discussion?
I do have one comment.
Counselor Bedison.
I was fortunate enough today to attend a lunch meeting with Professor Peter Blais Corcoran, who's actually a visiting Floby professor to the University of Nairobi's Mongari, no, I'm not going to say this correctly, Methai Institute for Peace in Environmental Studies. And Professor Corcoran is actually out of Florida Gulf Coast University and knows both President Dr. Shepherd at WNMU and Dr. Jack Crocker, the provost there. Dr. Crocker actually had hired him originally at Florida Gulf Coast University. And he actually, his, his particular business is in, or what he does is he really ensures or at least encourages educational institutions and higher educational institutions to incorporate sustainability throughout their educational programming and throughout their curriculum, so that we're preparing, you know, our next set of leaders to understand and realize what's coming down the pipe in terms of what we're talking about here today with the Sustainability Plan. And so, it was really refreshing to go there. Talked a lot about a particular plan that's being, project that's being worked out at Oberlin Project in Oberlin College. And we happen to have, in the Town of Silver City, all the moving parts of that plan, except for it doesn't quite come together with the university and the town the way it should. But I think it will with the adoption of this Sustainability Plan, if it's adopted, and also with the mayor's climate committee and everything that we've done over all these years under your guidance, mayor. I think it really is intriguing to see how, we actually had started long before Oberlin College folks had, and we have those pieces and moving parts. But I think that we're well within the realm of making it happen, especially in a partnership with WNMU. So, I just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you. Which leads right into the underacknowledgement Mayor's Climate Committee.
Yes.
I like your wording. Who made all things possible. That's pretty powerful. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
Yes, we do.
We do. There's no more discussion. We put these back on. We have a motion, a second, and no further discussion, to approve Resolution Number 2013-36, adoption of Town of Silver City Sustainability Plan 2030, policy statements, selected efforts, and the overall plan in principle, as amended to delete in the now therefore Section B and move Section C to Section B. Roll call.
Counselor Bedison?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Moronis?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. The next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of Resolution Number 2013-39, amending Resolution 99-32 regarding the Town Procurement Code, Public Works Contract, and Accounts Payable Process pursuant to the requirements of the Town Charter. Mr. Brown?
The finance staff has been reviewing the procurement code, which, I don't know, which you, most, some of you probably don't know, is because the town, under our territorial charter, basically the state considers us a home rule. So, we do have the authority, the town council does, to enact its own procurement code. Originally, when the last major revision was done, was back 14 years ago, when I did it. So, we have quite a few updates that we're going to need to do, but we wanted to get some major ones, some important ones, by the council, propose it to the council anyway here at this time. There's two, two sections that are important here. One is currently our limit before we have to go out to bid for tangible goods, construction and tangible goods, is 25,000. The state has actually increased. At that point, at the time when we enacted the previous codebook, the state was at 15,000. We had increased it to 25, and now the state is actually up to 60. So, what we would like to do is match it up to the 60,000, because most small projects that we see, 60,000 isn't very much these days when it comes to a project, especially the small ones. In fact, to give you an example, Robert Escada came to my office three weeks ago, two weeks ago, actually, and he needs to replace some well pumps at one of the wellfields. And for three pumps, we were talking about $39,000. And if he has to wait a month and a half or two months to get this process replaced, we're restricting our ability to pump at those wellfields and have to focus on other fields that maybe need to be rested or, or whatever it might be. But that's just one example of why we would like to get the, that limit increased. On the, the other issue that we're looking at is small purchases, which is 5,000 or less, which requires no quotes. For the purchasing card currently, we have a limit. Although that limit is $5,000, we have a limit to use the purchasing card at 2,000. We actually want to move that down, because we feel that the purchasing card needs to be restricted more for both the town and the staff. So, those are the two major changes that we're proposing. Any questions? Anita and Leanna are willing to answer your questions.
I bet I can think of a few.
The only thing that's been taking a lot to have a talk here.
Ask him how the utilities director went up last night. I can be mean. Any discussion from the audience on Resolution 2013-39? Come on. Nancy Gordon?
Yeah, my name's Nancy Gordon. I've been working on rehabilitation of the old waterworks building, and we had to go out for bid for... to go out for bid for, um, the repair of the one-story roof. It was a terrible experience. We got a last-minute quote from a out-of-town contractor that hadn't even looked at the, uh, building, except from the outside. And, um, anyway, it took almost a year for a sixty-day contract. Um, I was fighting with them almost the whole time to try to keep them, uh, in line with the specs. Uh, that project ended up being, uh, fifty thousand dollars. And so if we had just been able to stay under this sixty thousand dollar threshold and gone out for three bids from local contractors, it would have made my life a lot easier. So I am very supportive of this change.
Thank you, Nancy. And thank you for the work you do on the waterworks building. Anybody else? Seeing none? Any comments, questions from the council? Counselor Moronis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My questions, I, I believe I know the answers to, but do want to ask them just for clarification, maybe help, uh, those who are watching, who are, who will be watching us. This, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't trump the budget. We still have to work within budgets. You are still, uh, so there.
Oh, yes, we're, we're, we're limited, but this is in the process, um, for spending to, to.
And we're adjusting for, for the times, materiality constraints, we're just moving upward, um, amounts that are fourteen years out of date, so that, that's correct. I don't anticipate you wanting to do a two-hundred thousand dollar project and doing four contracts for fifty thousand to do something like that.
That'd be a violation of the, of the code. That, that's, uh, splitting, uh, the purchases, and that's a direct violation of, uh, of the chemical to try and do something. That's even with a small purchase. If you go out with a five thousand dollar limit, you go out and do three twenty-five hundred dollars for the same project, that's splitting the, so it's a direct violation. So that's basically what Leanne, uh, is looking for on our purchases, to ensure that that isn't done. And some employees have tried to get away with it, and she's clapped on.
So we do have some good policies and procedures in place to, to mitigate those type of, uh, issues of potentially materializing. You know, that, that satisfies me, and that, that is what I anticipated and hoped to hear, and hopefully that'll satisfy, uh, other citizens as they, um, continue to watch what we, we do and monitor us in our capacity. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? I think these are, are prudent recommendations. They're in line with the extremely strict guidance that the state has provided municipal governing, government in the recent years. And so we're not, we're not really doing anything extraordinary, and we're actually tightening the reins, as I believe we've been, had good guidance in doing that on the P cart. So I think this is, this is a strong recommendation. Any other discussion? Not entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Moronis?
I move for approval of Resolution twenty thirteen dash thirty-nine, amending Resolution ninety-nine dash thirty-two regarding the Town Procurement Code, Public Works Contracts, and Accounts Payable Process pursuant to requirements of the Town Charter.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's a motion, a second, no discussion, to approve Resolution two thousand thirteen dash thirty-nine, amending Resolution ninety-nine dash thirty-two regarding the Town Procurement Code, Public Works Contracts, and Accounts Payable Process pursuant to the requirements of the Town Charter. Roll call, please.
Counselor Moronis?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Bedison?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is discussion and vote on whether to change or cancel the regular meeting scheduled for November twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen.
The agenda at this point, for November twenty-six.
So there's no planning and zoning issues that are on a forty-five day deadline, or liquor licenses, or?
Not at this date.
Perfect. You aware of anything, Mr. Brown? Anita? Chief? I'm gonna get everybody to participate here. So if there is nothing, I would recommend that we go ahead and cancel the meeting, and our next meeting would be the second Tuesday in December. We do?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel?
I move, uh, to cancel the, uh, regular Town Council meeting scheduled for November twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen, and our next regular scheduled meeting would be December?
Second Tuesday.
December tenth.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to cancel the next regularly scheduled meeting for November twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen. Is there any discussion? Yeah, I dare one of you to vote against that one. There's a motion, a second, no discussion, to cancel the regular meeting scheduled for November twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen, making our next meeting for the Town Council December tenth, two thousand and thirteen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Today.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
A second. Motion stated.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.